It is 5:30 PM on Monday, May 16th. Welcome, everyone. And our first agenda item is city updates. So Ms. Solano, please take it away.
Good evening. Madam Chair, City Council, Mayor Gradisar, I have a couple of updates from the city this evening. The first is the COVID update from the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment website, giving the one-week cumulative positive case count for the county of Pueblo at 109.2, which was up from 76 from last Monday. The one-week positivity rate was up to 3.9, which last week I reported 2.7. And Pueblo County has 12 days, which is better than last week's 10 days of declining or stabilized hospitalizations. I do not have the detail of the patient count at either Parkview or St. Mary's Corwin. I do have, the only ARPA update that I have this evening is that finance is on deposit watch. And so when we do receive the funds sometime, we hope now in the month of May, I'm sure the mayor will be sending that out. But he did receive the initial email asking for the appropriate coding for that deposit to come through. So that was a good sign by itself, but no news as of yet. Last year, I believe that we received the deposit on the 15th of May, which of course was yesterday, but we didn't receive a deposit today that I was informed of. Moving on, I have an update about a home camp cleanup scheduled next Monday, May the 23rd. The cleanup will start at 8:30 AM at 26th and Dillon is where they're meeting. They have to stick, I guess they're planning to, this is code enforcement leading the way here, to stick between the areas of 26th and Highway 50 bypass. They're hoping to clear out as much as they can for the day and clear up the area. Participating city departments are police patrol, code enforcement, stormwater, Public Works and the Health Department have kindly provided the dumpsters. And the fire department will be providing a DOTS team to help for any alternative services that are necessary as they clean up the camp. I asked code enforcement if this was a good opportunity for any councilors who would like to to participate or observe. And she says, due to the heavy equipment, if you are interested, to please let me know, Karen Wilson know, and she will meet you and escort you. So instead of the concern about anybody walking around with all the heavy equipment that'll be there. Again, it's next Monday at 8:30. The entry point is, you know, not all the property there is some city property that they'll be cleaning up. So the police department has reached out to different property owners, but the access point is city property. So if anybody would like to see part of it or all of it, I think they'll be there for most of the day. And the next item is the National Link of Cities. They had designated this week as Infrastructure Week to promote the bipartisan infrastructure bill. It really will provide cities across the country represent a historic opportunity to gain ground on critical infrastructure projects that municipalities have often struggled to find enough resources for. The infrastructure bill is about 400 pages. If you'd like the link, I'll forward it to you. We printed one copy and it is upstairs in the mayor's office. But just to show what the city of Pueblo has been participating in, both President Graham wrote a letter of support with respect to the low and no emissions out of the transit grant, which also extends to the opportunity to purchase four electric buses. That grant goes in on Friday, I think, the 20th of May. And Counselor Tencio through your president at PACOG, I think, are in the process of submitting a letter of support for the transit bus facility move. So both of those grants go in this Friday. And so as we start to look at the NOFAS, the Notice of Federal Funding Awards that are coming out, the grant writer expert today met with the mayor that will continue to look at what the priorities might come out. But 400 pages, we're actually looking through, you know, when the timing is. There are many, many of them that have not yet announced when they would be released or when the due dates will be. What we're looking at, there were some that are requiring a match from municipal funds. So we're going to carefully look at what opportunity is available. And I believe, let me look to make sure I didn't include anything else here. That does conclude the city updates this evening. Do you have any questions or any directions for what to bring to you next week?
Thank you, Ms. Solano, for that update. What questions are there from Council? Counselor Flores?
The cleanup down at the camp there. There, I think half of the trash that's down there is making it appealing for vehicles to get in there. Mr. Schaefer, who has the roofing company right behind there, he gives me a weekly update about what's going on down there. And he's telling me it's turned into like a KOA campground down there. Is there any way that we can check to see if we can block off that road? There's definitely a road that goes into that area. I'm not sure whether we have any ownership there. But there are so many made roads in there. But the main road that goes from, when you cross over from the frontage road over the railroad and you just drive a little bit, it's very appealing. It looks like a road. And there's several people that live back there in campers and other things. And it just seems to me that somebody needs to check, number one, who owns that land? And if the city does, we should chain that off and, you know, make some sort of no trespass.
Yeah, I think the Public Works Director, Counselor Flores, is looking at how we might be able to control access to the city property at least that's back there. So he's working on that, I know.
Okay. And the second thing, it seems like if there's matches that are required for some of these grants, shouldn't we consider using the ARPA money as the match? Or at least combining or thinking that way, that if we could maximize and get 10 times the money, if we put up 10% of it or 20% of it, that we need to consider that.
It'll be, we'll be looking at the grant by grant opportunity to prioritize and the mayor to make recommendations to you. But so many of the federal grants prohibit match from federal funds. So, yeah, they don't, they don't accept a federal match coming from their own federal funds. But we have to look and wait as we go through the grant opportunities. We just didn't want to miss these two early ones that had to do with the transit.
Other questions at all for Ms. Solano? Thanks, Ms. Solano. Then moving on to our second agenda item is the countywide substance use plan. So can I please have Ms. Dennison and Ms. Leva to the podium, please? Really quick, I do have a quick update now that we're talking about it, sorry. I, in looking at the, this is part of the city updates, but in looking at the agenda for councilors, you know, we all receive the the next couple of months of the work sessions. I wanted to let you all know that next Monday is canceled because it's one of the fifth Mondays. And then I also gave us a reprieve for the July 4th holiday. So we will not be having one. The HSP PR is going to get bumped onto another day. So we will not be having a work session during the July 4th week. Thanks. Ms. Dennison, Ms. Leva, whenever you're ready.
Awesome. Thank you so much. So today, we're here to present to you on the countywide substance use plan. My name is Olivia Leva. I work at the Pueblo Department of Public Health and Environment. My position there is as a health promotion specialist.
All right. Good evening. Thank you so much for allowing us to come and speak to you. My name is Shiloh Dennison, and I am a program manager also at the Pueblo Department of Public Health and Environment. And this evening, we're going to be presenting and talking to you a little bit about a really awesome opportunity and a process that we're going through as a community to be able to plan around what we would like to see happen for substance use within Pueblo County. And where do we want to see that go? This is a conversation that's been ongoing, obviously, in multiple different realms. And really, from our point of view, has been precipitated by a lot of the opioid settlement dollars that are coming into our state, into our community as well, really culminating into this opportunity to have a really solid plan for how we would like to see those funds be used in our community, the impacts we'd like to see as a result of that, as well as the other funding that's coming into our community on a regular basis or opportunities similar to what Ms. Solano was referencing. There's grant funds that are coming out on a regular basis that could be optimized and used if we had a really solid plan for how we wanted to see that move forward. So we're going to be presenting to you a little bit about what we're going through to be able to try to create that plan and the timelines associated with that as well. And would welcome any questions at the end.
Do we have the presentation available? All right. So firstly, I will just set the stage for kind of how we got into this planning process to start off. So in August of last year, really late last year in 2021, the Colorado Office of the Attorney General announced how the funds for the opioid settlement funding would be allocated. And we had seen that 20% would be provided to local governments, being the county in specific. So that really got us thinking, the best way that we can make use of these funds to really leverage that in our county and put it towards solutions that are going to work for the people of Pueblo. And really, in thinking about that, we thought we could, as Shiloh mentioned, create a plan that not only laid out different solutions that we could use opioid settlement funding for, but also ways that we could plug in grants that we've seen come up related to substance use. In thinking about who would really be behind the creation of this plan, it really was the experts, the people who are on the ground doing this work, who know the evidence basis of what programs and solutions really are feasible for Pueblo County. So that's where the coalition that I facilitate, the Substance Use Response Ecosystem, as you can see in the presentation, also known as Sure, really comes to play. Because this coalition brings together a lot of these stakeholders already, who are the experts, who are providing different substance use resources to the community. As you can see through the graphic, the way that the coalition is really made up is with the ecosystem backbone. So that being me as the facilitation portion of that. And then we are also led by a data stewardship or our data pod who provides, you know, accurate and near-real-time data about substance use in the community. I had actually come to present on you about the Substance Use Data Dashboard, which is also available that provides this information. And then we also have different pods or work groups that are kind of topic-specific. So looking at what we have on there, we have our Judicial Pod, Public Policy Prevention Youth, Peer Pod, Medical Providers, Behavioral Health and Harm Reduction. And really, Sure as a whole, we meet monthly and we bring together all of these different stakeholders in substance use. So moving forward, as we kind of came together as a group, we were thinking of really creating this results statement. So once again, just reading out our results statement for the Sure group as a whole is everyone in Pueblo County has access to substance use-related knowledge, resources and supports and feels safe discussing substance use. And not only is this kind of the goal statement for Sure, but it also is a guiding statement for what we hope that this plan will be able to really tie back into. And then finally, as we were really putting the pieces together to get started in this planning process, we came together with an agreement for a goal statement. So that goal statement being that after seven meetings, Sure and additional planning partners that we had identified who might have been missing from the table will have produced a countywide substance use plan that will be utilized to strategically guide allocation and/or application for substance use-related funds. As I mentioned, those being opioid settlement, other substance use grant-related funds, things of that nature. And that being applied towards feasible, evidence-based implementations for Pueblo County. And this plan will outline programs under four different topic areas of focus, those being prevention, harm reduction, treatment and recovery, and criminal justice. And these different categories were actually outlined through an opioid response blueprint that the Colorado Health Institute had outlined for allocation for opioid settlement funds. So that's where we are pulling these different categories from. So moving forward, this beautiful process journey map kind of outlays how we've been going along with this process. So as you can see, in January of 2022, that's really where this seven-meeting process started. And that being setting the stage, thinking through our goal statement, and then also the really thinking through creation of that results statement. In February, we revisited the results statement, finalized that, and then started brainstorming prevention ideas. In March, we brainstormed harm reduction as a group. And then in April, treatment. And now in May, we, which our meeting is actually tomorrow, we will be revisiting prevention and then also delving into recovery as well. But then, as you can see, it continues on, outlaying different programs for criminal justice. And then in July, coming together as a group to prioritize and formalize. And then, as you can see, we have the decision-making body, which Shiloh will cover later. And then that plan really being utilized to plug into other grants and then also the opioid settlement funding that we see coming through.
So as we move this forward, as Olivia outlined for you with the timeline, we do envision as all of these experts have come together and really provided their input and thought about what would be appropriate and really impactful methods and efforts that we could implement. We know that there's going to need to be a decision-making board that will help to prioritize, narrow that down. We can't do it all or we're not going to have an impact. So we really want to start forming that decision-making board. You can see on there who we anticipate the voting membership would be on that group. This is directly coming from the plan that Olivia referenced earlier that came from the Colorado Health Institute as well as the Colorado Consortium. And really trying to define who would be able to make those true ultimate decisions, pulling that from all of the input and expertise that those experts are bringing to the table and that we really would be available for consultation as well. So we would want definitely law enforcement, elected officials, DHS, as well as the Health Department at that table. Once that final plan is created and we've made those decisions, we've prioritized and narrowed, we really see that this is where the rubber hits the road and there's a lot of work that then would happen. But a lot of great impacts that could also happen from that as well. So this somewhat convoluted graphic there is really illustrating that if we are able to reach that ultimate goal of creating this plan, that then we would put into place a lot of measures to be able to track progress. Are we hitting our goals? Are we making the impact that we desire to have? And really, what is changing as a result of the efforts and the funding being utilized? We anticipate that a lot of that work could happen with the existing Sure structure. We have the people that are doing the work there at the table. They could continue to do that through those pods that are there. And each of those pods would have performance measures as well that would ultimately be kind of some proxy measures for, are we hitting those long-term outcomes? We really do anticipate as well that this group could be utilized for when those additional funds come into the community. So when grants are available or some of those other aspects come in, this group could really collaborate and be able to say, this is the best organization to do this work or where could we make this happen based off of the plan that's available as that outline? So the Sure Coalition, as you can see there, would continue to coordinate those funding opportunities, applications thereof, and align with the plans and then address any barriers and concerns, right? We know plans aren't perfect, so things are going to happen and we're going to have to adjust. We do plan to put in a lot of things to support this and be able to make sure that this plan is successful and the efforts are making the desired impact. As Olivia mentioned, we have a lot of near-real-time data that's coming from a lot of our partners, including law enforcement, the hospitals, Department of Human Services, schools, et cetera, even more than that, that we can really pull to be able to truly see if we're making impacts, if there's new trends we need to react to. And then we definitely plan to have some reports that are coming back out that are tracking the implementation of this, so we can demonstrate that and show progress and show those ultimate performance measures. And we truly believe that if we can get a community-wide plan outlined and laid out that we can all follow and we can really truly track over the implementation of, that this would be the largest impact for Pueblo County, that we're going to have a coordinated approach that really reduces duplication and competition amongst everybody. We'll have this work group of experts that's readily available to not only implement, but also problem solve and troubleshoot. It'll be a guide for decision-makers to be able to know that this is, there, you know, things that have been proven to be effective in implementation and continuous evaluation of those efforts as well. I think the power of the Sure group is we have such dynamic viewpoints at the table and we have everything from A to Z. So if we can get those individuals to come together and say, these are the things we should be doing as a community, it could have really amazing impacts. So we are done with our formal presentation. If you have any questions or comments for us, we'd love those.
Thank you, Ms. Dennison and Ms. Leva, for that presentation. I want to just point out as well to all the councilors that Commissioner Ortiz will actually be here next week to talk about the opioid settlement and the local allocation of that opioid settlement, those, all of those monies at next week's work session. So what questions are there? Counselor Flores?
What do you estimate the portion of that opioid settlement is going to come to Pueblo County?
We don't know the exact dollar amounts right now. As Olivia talked about, we know the percentage of that amount that will be coming, but the actual dollar amount is still unfortunately being held up in legislation and litigation.
Yeah, the reason I bring that up is that if you look at all of the, well, mental health and organizations that deal with substance abuse, their budgets are massive in Pueblo County. And I often wonder, you know, how success is measured. You know, we recently were working as a city trying to find a location for Crossroads and we couldn't do that. So they've landed out in Pueblo West now. But how are you going to be connected to Health Solutions, to Crossroads, to the Mental Health Institute and the Circle Program that now is out in Pueblo West? In other words, it sounds like we're creating another silo instead of coming together. And I see that you have come together within that culture. But are they going to be involved? And your presentation, it just seemed like they were far removed. But could you explain how you're going to be connected to all of these? And they actually dwarf the budget of the city. I mean, because I've studied this and there's a lot of money that's going to a lot of programs. And I guess at the very end, how are you going to measure success?
Yeah, absolutely. Great questions. So we do have our presentation from Health Solutions, Crossroads, as well as from multiple of those programs within each of those organizations. We don't have the Mental Health Institute represented right now, but we could definitely explore that. And so they are there providing their feedback and input into this plan at this time. And then once we kind of get it a little more formalized, our plan would be to take it back to those leadership groups and make sure they're very involved. We've already had conversations with their leadership and they're very well aware this is happening and would not bring anything forward to that decision-making board that they're not supportive of or that they wouldn't get behind first and foremost. And I think part of what we're trying to do with this plan is also to say, what is already happening? And what could potentially, we put a little bit more funding behind that would make a bigger impact? Or where's already enough funding existing that we don't need to go that direction? So trying to maximize that as well. I agree. It is a, there's a lot there already happening.
And my last question, it seems like the successful treatment for organizations have a residential component to it where they're taken out of their normal environment into a completely controlled environment. And it seems that's why the Circle Program was so successful. And I know that Health Solution has an internal residential program too. So at the end of the day, that could be one of, I guess, the ideas that come out of your organization. And then you're talking about a much more expensive, you know, program. But it seems to me like it's the number one program is getting these people into a different environment that need, that are, you know, really suffering with addiction.
Yeah, I would say that there's a lot of different approaches for each person. And unfortunately, there's not one solid approach that's going to work for everybody. So I think it is trying to have this really comprehensive look at things and how do we make sure to meet everybody where they're at, including prevention? How do we keep people from even getting into this situation?
Absolutely. What other questions are there from Council? Counselor Tencio?
What outcomes are you hoping to get out of this? So you're getting opioid money and you're getting grants to pay a lot of people to formulate a plan? And you got a plan and what? Well, I mean, do you want to reduce drug abuse by 10%? Or do you want to? I don't know. You didn't say a word about any outcomes that you might want to do from this. I mean, nice, I mean, all these people are nice people and they all want to do good. But you're going to get a plan, you're going to put it on the shelf, and that's it. Everybody gets paid from the opioid money and the grant money and everybody gets to live real good. But the drug, the people who are drug-induced get nothing. What, I don't understand. What's the plan? What, what are you trying to do?
Definitely. So just to clarify first, we don't have any opioid settlement dollars to this point. So this plan is not being funded by opioid settlement dollars at all. So our plan would be to truly impact, ultimately, we don't want less people using, less people who are accessing our services and our community and using those resources. Definitely less deaths from opioids and other drugs, less strain on the hospital systems, as well as our police department and our AMR and fire department as well. So tracking all of that will be a part of that. I think as soon as we know exactly what we're implementing, then we can put more specific outcome measures in there of how percentages and all of that. We don't have that as of yet, because we really aren't sure what exactly is going to be implemented. But as soon as we know those things, we can definitely put those in.
I'm sorry, but I just think it's another high-diluted educational exercise that leads to nothing. But I hope something comes up.
Counselor Maishri?
So you're really just, you don't have the resources for treatment other than someone else provides the resources for treatment, correct? You would just be an advisory board?
Correct. We're just, yeah, bringing all the experts to the table to really decide what would be the most appropriate strategies and efforts to be able to make the changes. So we currently do not have any funding for allocation. We're just trying to facilitate the process to bring all those partners together to make those decisions.
So they don't work together already in the community? I mean, because you can't give direction to a private organization, right? You can't, can you implement what you think they should do with their treatment center and how they should treat people or?
No, I think that that's why exactly they're at the table of what, you know, they're already providing the, they're providing the best practices related to treatment. So we're not asking individuals like myself what we should do around treatment. We're asking truly those treatment providers. And I think they do a great job of collaborating in the community. But I don't know that we've ever sat down and said, where do we collectively want to go? I think that those have been kind of siloed efforts to this point of where do we independently want to go and what does that look like? But having a collective plan of where ultimately, long-term, we want to go is what we're striving for.
And I do just want to interject and say, as we've gone through this planning process, as, you know, we've heard, there's a lot of siloing. People don't know about the resources that are available to them in the county. And even, you know, you sit down with some providers and they might not know that what somebody else is offering. So as we've gone through this and as we've talked about, we've really seen, you know, oh, this is a program that's really working in Pueblo. This is something that needs to be funded or we can put efforts here and really laying that out in the plan to let people know that this is something that's working in the county. And just to reiterate, we aren't funded by opioid settlement funding right now, but it really is kind of a blueprint for the ways that, which, the ways we should go, the ways in which we can use money and get the best impact in our county for that. Because I think as, if you look, there are regional bodies that are sitting together and kind of thinking through ways to do that. And in essence, we're trying to mimic that at the county level as well and city level.
Counselor Warner?
Yeah, I just, you know, I kind of understand the frustration up here because we throw a lot of money at the homeless and we throw a lot of money at drug abuse and rehab. And we throw a lot of money at trying to keep drugs out of our country to start with. And it's just, it just never seems to, never seems to end. And I think that's what everybody's, or the people that talked about that was. It just seems hopeless.
And I could definitely understand that. And I, we're hopeful that we can truly be able to try to, I think that the big difference, as Olivia said, is we are in pockets, having conversations and collaborating, but to try to truly come together and say, these are the few strategies instead of these are the many strategies that we want to have implemented. That we really are hopeful to turn the tide.
You know what hope is, don't you? Hope is what you have when reality has left you nothing.
Counselor Graham?
I just wanted to thank you two for your presentation, even though you guys are just getting hounded up here. It seems that, you know, the county is getting allocated this money and I'm glad to see that the county is going to be putting a plan forward to help with substance abuse. You know, without this money, more people are just going to be left on the, on the streets. You know, without this money, more people are just going to be left on the, on the streets as addicts. My dad's a heroin addict, so this kind of hits close to home. So I'm glad that, you know, this is, this is out there and people like you guys are going to be facilitating the money and getting it to where it needs to go. So thank you.
Yeah, I apologize for being a little snarky here, but I see these plans and studies and analysis and all this stuff coming forward. We get all these presentations and nothing.
And do you mind?
Will you come, are you going to suggest things like, like to the law enforcement people? Are you going to suggest that, let me throw something way out there, to pass laws like they do in Oregon? And make it a, a health problem instead of a legal problem? They passed a law in, in the Colorado State Legislature to outlaw fentanyl for possession, I guess. What's that going to do? All this, that's going to do is fill the jails. That's not going to do anything, you know? Is it going to stop the fentanyl from coming in? Is it going to help people who are addicted? Nothing, you know? Are you going to be suggesting things that, you know, maybe something way out of the box? You know, try, start treating drug abuse and, and substance abuse as a health problem, not a, not a, you know? I, I'd like to, I'll give you an idea. I've had plenty of alcoholics in my family. I'd like to be able to have a family member go into a liquor store and show them a picture and put this picture on your wall. Do not sell to that person ever again, or else you get fined a thousand dollars a week, you know? Or into a bar or whatever, you know? I mean, yeah, at least make it harder for alcoholics to get liquor, whatever, you know?
Yeah, I agree that we need suggestions that are going to be impactful and meaningful. So that's definitely what we're hoping to do is to bring what is already working in other communities. Let's see what's happening. Let's not reinvent the wheel. What's already working, bring those suggestions forward. Ultimately, I think the, the big two takeaways, I would say, is that Decision Making Board is really going to be the ones that ultimately then with the input from these experts, make some of those decisions. And then two, you're right in the fact that this plan will exist and it will only be as good as the resources allocated towards that. We have plans in place to be able to measure impacts and all of that. We won't be the ones allocating those funds though. So I think that'll be the key thing. And I also think it's hard because there's not necessarily a plan right now. We can't necessarily visualize the things that we're going to throw money behind. Olivia, you mentioned earlier that there, that there were some prevention activities that were already brainstormed by the group. Can you give, give us some examples about what that would entail?
Yeah, so some of the prevention activities that we've brainstormed, we're looking at, and a lot of them really fall in school basis. So Shiloh and myself have been having conversations with the schools just to see what's feasible on their end. But looking at, you know, implementation of life skills curriculum, teaching our kids how to make healthy choices for them. And as far as prevention goes, also kind of looking at other prevention measures we've talked about is really, how do we make a community that supports prevention? How do we offer things like, that are communities that care Coalition that I know Councilwoman Martinez is very familiar with? Pro-social opportunities for kids to get involved with, things like that. So those are things we're already looking at as far as that prevention brainstorm that came out. Also even just community education, de-stigmatization efforts, having the conversation and educating the community about it. So those are some of the things that have come out of the prevention brainstorm. But as I mentioned, we're touching upon, you know, treatment, harm reduction, recovery, looking at, once people get out of jail, what's the environment that they go back to? You know, how do we make Pueblo an environment supportive of individuals' recoveries? So those are just some of the things that we're brainstorming right now. But yes, we do have prevention ideas on the table. A lot of them, like I said, focus on youth. So, you know, what are we doing in the schools? What does that curriculum look like? And then thinking through what's the best curriculum that we can provide to the children in Pueblo, so.
Counselor Flores, do you?
I just had one, one last comment and that was, I guess I know more about Crossroads, the, the Circle Program, which used to be at the Colorado Mental Health Institute. But I've heard over and over again that that's one of the most successful drug treatment. And, and these are people that are at the very end. I mean, they're just going to drop out or die if they don't do something. But I hear that's one group or that's one program that I think you need to look at as you guys are moving forward. And maybe replicated or duplicated and that might be a good source of this opioid money. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll definitely take that into consideration. Any other questions or comments from Council? Seeing none. I appreciate Ms. Ennisson and Ms. Leyva, your time today. And I think that it sets us up really nicely for Commissioner Ortiz next week to discuss what actually the local allocation and the opioid settlement process looks like from the Attorney General's office. So now we have some context knowing that there's actually a plan and we're not just going to get this money and spend it without a plan, which I think is why it's so valuable to have a plan. So thank you so much for that presentation. Our next then agenda item is the, from the mayor, talking about the Comanche III power plant closure.
Right. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the council. Daryl, if you'll put that PowerPoint up. Appreciate the opportunity this evening to update you a little bit on what's going on with Comanche III, with the Just Transition Process, talk about what's happening at the Public Utilities Commission. Comanche III was opened in about the early 1980s, I think, the most recent plant. And it was, when it came online, it was scheduled to last until 2070. They've had nothing but problems from the beginning of, of the operations at coal-fired plant. It might be the biggest producer of unwanted gases in the state of Colorado, Comanche III. It's a coal-fired electric plant. As I say, they've had problems from the beginning. Recently, it's owned by a partnership. There's three partners in it, I think. One of the partners has brought a claim against Public Service Company and XL because of the way they've managed Comanche III. Apparently, some of the reasons that it's been shut down for considerable periods of time is it hasn't been operated properly. But as I say, it's sort of been a lemon from the day it was built. And there are all kinds of calls now for it to be shut down early, earlier than 2070. And it's almost guaranteed that that's going to happen at this point. Environmentalists want it shut down sooner rather than later. The Public Utilities Commission, which regulates Comanche III and XL Energy, is concerned, I think, about what the operation of that plant is costing its ratepayers. And obviously, its ratepayers have to pay for any of those repairs, have to pay for the continued operation. And its ratepayers will have to pay for the early shutdown of Comanche III. So this is fortunately not going to affect citizens in Pueblo in terms of ratepayers. But it will have some big effects on us. As part of its electricity resource plan, Public Service Company suggested that it would shut down Comanche III as early as 2040, 30 years early than what it was planned when it was, when it was built. During the course of that, of those hearings and those discussions at the Public Utilities Commission, the City of Pueblo, the Board of Waterworks, Pueblo County, agreed that we'd enter into a settlement agreement allowing them to shut down Comanche III by 2035, which is earlier really than Public Service Company wanted. But there were a lot, a lot of pressure to shut it down earlier. That agreement was entered into. Not all the parties agreed to that settlement. And so consequently, the Public Utilities Commission continues to have hearings. And I think there's been another agreement that's been circulated to say, okay, let's shut it down by 2030. And so in anticipation of moving away from coal-fired generation plants, in 2019, the Colorado Legislature, this is why, let me go back up here and talk about why Comanche III is important to the City of Pueblo. We've got 77 good-paying jobs, union jobs at Comanche III that pay very, very good wages. Comanche III, and this is not including one or two, plants one or two, those are going to be shut down in the next couple of years. Those are the older coal-fired generating stations there. But Comanche III pays about $31 million a year in property taxes to Pueblo County and the other taxpayers that get part of those property tax receipts. We paid the Hassan School of Business to do an economic impact analysis of Comanche III and what its shutdown would cost the City of Pueblo. And the analysis that was done by the Hassan School of Business was that we get about $196 million a year in total economic benefit from Comanche III. By the time you take into consideration the property taxes, the jobs, the jobs that are created by the jobs that are at Comanche III, that's what they estimated the economic value of Comanche III to be to the City of Pueblo. So you can see if they're talking about shutting that down 30 years early, what kind of an economic impact that could, could have on the City of Pueblo. Couple of things you should know that as part of these settlement, XL has a long-term contract with the Board of Waterworks where they have to take or pay for the water that they've contracted for until 2045. So they're going to pay the Board of Waterworks for that water, whether they use it or not, simply because that's the contract they have. And also as part of these settlement negotiations, XL has agreed to continue paying the property taxes to Pueblo County taxing entities until 2040. So even if it shuts down in 2030, they'll continue to pay those property taxes for 10 years after that. And that's, as I say, at $31 million a year, that's a pretty significant number that they would continue to, to pay. So in anticipation, not just of Comanche III, but of the state of Colorado, moving away from coal and coal-fired generating stations. In 2019, the House of, the legislature passed a Just Transition Support for Coal-Related Jobs. There were four Tier One communities in that legislation and Pueblo was one of them. Because we have the Comanche Generating Station that relies on coal. And as the state of Colorado moves away from coal, the legislature and the governor signed the bill, believe that there should be some plans in place so that these communities that have historically depended on coal for a lot of their economic benefit are not left high and dry by moving to this cleaner form of energy. So there are four Tier One communities, as I say, and Pueblo is one of them. And the goal for this Just Transition Process is how do we transition away from coal in an equitable fashion? Pueblo is one of the four Tier One communities, is sort of in a better position than the other three communities because Comanche III is going to continue to operate probably for at least 10 years. One of the other communities, I think Montrose, that generating station is already shut down. And there are coal mines that have shut down as well. So those communities have been faced with this impact almost immediately without having the ability to transition, if you will, to a different form of economy or to a different way of replacing some of those economic benefits that, that they've done. After the state passed that Just Transition Law and we were aware that Pueblo became a, was a Tier One community, we put together a committee, a Just Transition Committee locally, that consists of the individuals that you see there, which messenger is Representative IBW, that represents the employees at, at Comanche III. And the other individuals there, I think you'll, you'll recognize as Hillary Glasgow is also a labor leader. We thought it was important for them to, to have a voice on this Just Transition Committee. We put this committee together to sort of coordinate with the state and to begin organizing the effort in Pueblo County to move away from coal at Comanche III and to make plans for how will we replace that $31 million in taxes that Comanche III has been paying? How will we replace that $196 million a year in economic benefit that the Hassan School of Business says will be generated here? So that's been the purpose of this. And this committee has been meeting once a month for a year. We've coordinated with the Office of Just Transition and with the Department of Local Affairs. We've recently been notified that we're probably going to get a grant award of $461,438 for planning and for implementation of this Just Transition Process over the next four years. We've been notified that we have been awarded the grant. We've been asked not to publicize it at this point because it's still apparently in a protest period. But our name is on this grant for this amount of money. We have developed a job description and what we plan to do is hire a Just Transition Coordinator. This will, we've developed a job description for this individual. We haven't decided whether it'll be an employee or whether it could be a contractor. We've written it broad enough so that it's open, so that depending on who responds to the request for proposals, whether it's an employee or somebody that wants to contract, they may or may not be an employee. We wanted to, I think, keep it broad enough so that we could get the best person available, whether they'd be willing to be an employee of the city or whether they wanted to be an independent contractor. And the way we've set it up originally is that this will be a city employee in the mayor's office, funded by this grant that we're going to receive from the State Office of Just Transition. We had discussions about, you know, where should this position live? And eventually, it might make sense that it lives in PEDCO or in an economic development branch as the process moves forward and more and more effort and time is being spent on economic development. But in the initial phases at least, we believe that, and the committee believed that it was best that it reside in the city and that it start coordinating this effort, making sure we get this off to a good start and start moving in the right direction. So as it's set up at the present time, that's what this individual will be doing. They'll organize a community effort and coordinate with the state's office about how we're going to do this. They'll work to replace the 77 jobs that are going to be lost at, at Comanche III. And during the course of the last year, XL's made it clear that none of those individuals who are employed in those positions are going to lose their job. They're all basically guaranteed jobs with XL. They might not be in Pueblo County and they might have to leave Pueblo County to keep their job. So the individuals probably are not as big a concern for the community as the community itself, where those 77 jobs have the potential of leaving. But we've got Public Community College and CSUP represented on this Just Transition Committee to help those individuals if some of them don't want to leave or if there's a need for, for that kind of retraining to take place. So, and this Just Transition Coordinator will work to replace the tax base that's caused by closing Comanche III and will work on, I said, later on, on economic development to try to help get that, that money replaced. So I wanted to bring you up to speed about what's going on in that process. And it's actually sort of going on two tracks. You know, the state has this Just Transition Process and the Public Utilities has its process as well. And probably part of what the Public Utilities Commission will rule, if it allows XL to close early, will be what kind of processes are going to be for a transition away from coal in the community that's affected by, by Comanche III. So we expect that for a while at least, there'll be these dual tracks that we'll have to keep track of as we discuss Comanche III. So happy to answer any questions that anybody might have.
Thanks, Mayor. Counselor Martinez Ortega?
Thank you. Out of the 461,000, is there going to be opportunity for those 77 individuals to pull from that grant to? to pull from that grant to further like schooling for different kinds of, see what other job opportunities there are?
There's not. The budget for that, that amount is for that Just Transition Coordinator. But there's going to be funds available, I think, in the state. I think the legislature's appropriated, and I'm going by memory now, thirteen million dollars for this Just Transition Process for the first two years. So out of that, there could be some money available for those individuals. But that's part of what the coordinator will work on is, and Public Service is doing that as well, identifying what aid individual workers might have. As I say, they've pretty much been guaranteed that nobody's going to lose their job with Public Service over this process.
Yeah, and I just know that some of the folks that work there are Puebloans who will not want to leave their family and things like that. So I'm just kind of thinking about schooling and other, just figuring out how to replace.
Well, Public Service obviously provides gas in Pueblo, so they're not electricity. But if they have skills that are transferable over to the gas side of the business, I'm sure that's a possibility. But there will be some people that won't want to leave Pueblo, I'm sure, even if that means they could remain in the electric side of the house. So, yeah. And so we're hoping that this coordinator will, number one, help identify those people. And Public Service Company is still sort of in the process of hiring individuals. I mean, they got to keep the plant up and running. And even as Comanche Three winds down, as I say, this plant has been a nightmare for a public service company. They're only going to use it about thirty percent of the time. They're still going to use it as a peaking plant in the summertime. But even if they're only using it as a peaking plant and it's only running in the summertime, they still got to have those seventy-seven people there every day to keep that plant up and running. So, you know, for, in terms of our health in Pueblo, the less that plant operates, probably the better off we're going to be because it's not going to be spewing stuff into the atmosphere that we've gotten. And you know what the problem is, obviously, is that shortly after Comanche Three went online, they quit selling energy to our local power providers. So except for Everas, nobody in Pueblo consumes energy from Comanche Three. And now Everas doesn't even do it because they're getting their energy from the solar field that Public Service Company put in. So we sort of have, you know, all of the detriments and none of the benefits of Comanche Three at this point. So what we have to worry about is, once we lose that tax base, once we lose those jobs, how are we going to replace that economic benefit? And that's what this Just Transition Process will allow us to do. And as I say, fortunately, we've got ten years or eight years to go through this process. It's not like the plant's closing tomorrow. So that puts us, I think, in advantage over some of these other communities. But we're going to have to work hard on it because it's important.
Counselor Tencio.
Yeah, and one of the bigger problems is that all of these employees out there, they're close to six-figure employees, and we can't take them to Public Community College, teach them how to do computer jobs for forty thousand. You know, you're not, we're not going to do them any favors. How do we get them into a position where they're making the same amount of money that they're making now? Because those are darn good jobs out there.
They're good-paying jobs.
Good, great-paying jobs. But so we got our hands full, so to speak. But one of the benefits to it closing, and I've said this from the almost very beginning, as all the coal-fired power plants up north close, Excel and Public Service, the other providers up there are going to have to generate electricity from someplace, and it's going to cost them a heck of a lot more. We have the, our rates are really high here in Pueblo. Guess what? They're going to be some of the lowest in Colorado because those communities up there are going to have to pay, like you say, all the money that Excel is going to have to pay us for property taxes and everything, that comes out of the ratepayers' pockets. So I've been saying this all along, that one day, we, because our rates are already set. We have our pegs of power plants in place for the next, what, forty, fifty years? We don't have to worry about where we're going to get our electricity from. Whereas Northern Colorado is going to be in a heck of a pickle when it comes to Excel providing more generation for that area up there. So looking forward twenty years.
Not the way I would have one of our rates to look good by having everybody else's go up.
You look at electric generation in terms of twenty, forty, fifty-year increments, not gee, I'm paying high prices today. Woe is me. Well, what are you going to be paying twenty years from now? And then another thing, I was appointed to the Pueblo Plex Board. Another pickle that we're going to get ourselves into is the plant out there is going to be closing in the next couple of two or three years. There are eight hundred people, Puebloans, that work out there. That's going to be another Just Transition thing that we're going to have to wrap our minds around. Not to mention eighteen hundred, two thousand people working out there. There are people in Lahana, Rocky Ford, all around the area, Fountain. Most of the high-paying engineers live in Colorado Springs, so I'm sure they'll do just fine. But the hardcore workers, the eight hundred from Pueblo, are going to need jobs. So we're going to have to work on that later on.
Counselor Maestri, you had your mic on. Counselor Flores.
Just maybe you know this answer. I had somebody call me, ask me, once Bechtel leaves and once the army leaves there, who's going to provide fire service to that Pueblo Plex area? Does anybody know? Would that be the city or would that be the county?
I would guess it'd be Pueblo Rural Fire District, but I, that's just a guess. I don't know for sure.
They're working on that. They're planning for that because the army will be out of there in probably three or four years.
Not in twenty-six. From the, you know, the report they gave us the other night.
Yeah, so they are working on that. But there are going to be conversations with the city. There are going to be conversations with the county. We're going to have to come together with the city, county, and Pueblo Plex and figure all those things out. But the conversations are starting.
Any other questions or comments at all about this specific topic? I guess I'm curious about the PUC. When will they decide or when will they make a ruling at all?
Well, I don't think they have any deadline, but I expect that in the next sixty days, we should probably hear something. They've been, the public seat sort of operates strangely. They have to have their discussions in public among the commissioners. So that's how we get some of this information and get a feeling that they're not going to go along with the settlement that says Comanche can stay up until twenty thirty-five. That's how everybody got working on the settlement to go to twenty thirty, be based on public comments that the commissioners made at a public meeting. So, but I expect in the next sixty days, we'll probably get some kind of order from them about what, about that electric resource plan that Public Service Company filed and whether they're going to allow it to take place and under what circumstances. Dan, do you have anything else? No?
And what's the timeline then on hiring the Just Transition Coordinator?
Well, as soon as the protest period is up for the awarding of the grant to us, we will publicize that position, and we'll try to get somebody hired as quickly as we can. As I say, initially, to continue this Just Transition effort and to organize the community, you know, schedule the meetings, run the meetings, do that kind of stuff, and begin working towards the replacement of those tax dollars, the economic development pieces of it. So as soon as possible, we expect that that grant will allow that person to remain for about forty-eight months. That includes a little bit of money for office space and phones and that kind of stuff, but mostly it's salary. And the salary range, I think we raised to a hundred to a hundred and thirty, eighty to a hundred and ten, to try to make sure that we could attract somebody that has some skills. And this was not a decision I made. This was a decision by the committee about, you know, what kind of person do we want, what kind of skills do they need, what will it take us to get them? And we'll just have to see. You know, you never know till you open it up, whether you get somebody or not.
And how many, sorry, Counselor, I just have one more other question. So it's going to be over four years, the forty-eight months. How many of, how many of those years will be planning versus implementation?
Oh, not much. It'll be both from the beginning. I mean, they'll be taking advantage of opportunities to implement the program in the Just Transition, yeah, right from the beginning.
Okay. Counselor Martinez Ortega.
Thank you. It's just a real quick question. I heard of a community meeting with the Just Transition folks here in Pueblo towards the end of the month. Is that true? Have you heard, has anybody heard anything about that?
I have not.
Okay.
Counselor, Excel regularly holds a meeting with the current employees, and they may call it that Just Transition, they update the staff. And it's Excel Leadership updating the staff on a regular basis. So perhaps that is where you've heard it from. I even know they've had them about one eight weeks ago, and I know they've planned another one for August, but there could be one now that that's where you're hearing about it within the plant.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, we're moving on. Thanks, Mayor, for that update with Comanche Three. And then we're going to transition to the Family Medical Leave Insurance Program. So can we have Ms. Pacheco and Mr. Jagger? Whenever you're ready.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of council. Thanks for allowing us to come and speak to you tonight. We do want to share some information on a new program called the Family and Medical Leave Insurance Program through the state. And I'll probably do the bulk of the presenting, but I have our excellent Deputy City Attorney Bob Jagger here to answer any questions and to jump in if I go astray here. So just to give you some information, oh, that's not right, is it? I assumed an arrow was correct. Am I good now? Okay, there we go. Okay, so just to give you some information on what family is, in November of twenty twenty, fifty-seven percent of Colorado voters voted to pass Proposition 118. This established a new state program providing paid leave for employees who have a need to take leave for very specific reasons. It's similar to the federal law, the Family and Medical Leave Act, you've probably heard of that, which allows for up to twelve weeks of job-protected leave for employees to take for specific reasons. The key difference between the federal law and this law is that under the state program, it's actually a paid leave benefit, whereas under FMLA, it is an unpaid benefit. So there is a cost to provide this paid leave benefit under family, and that will be a cost shared fifty-fifty by employers and employees. And this will apply to all employers in the state of Colorado with ten or more employees. There is an opt-out provision for local government employees. A decision for the city of Pueblo, we would like to make by July first, and that's why we're here tonight, because of the timing of that. Now, Bob has since learned as recently as today that that date might be a little bit pushed out.
Yes, you have through the end of the year to make the decision, but we can proceed if we get direction with the Nordons.
Through when, Bob?
Through the end of the year.
Okay, end of the year.
You know, we've talked about that, and we don't see that there's a real value in waiting to make this decision. So that's why we're bringing it to you tonight, because we do need your guidance on how you would like us to proceed with respect to this law after we give you our staff recommendation. So in terms of using this leave, really trying, Daryl, oh, there we go. There's really five categories of reason to use this family leave. Caring for a new child, whether that's through birth, adoption, or foster. Caring for one's own personal serious health condition, caring for a family member, serious health condition, making arrangements for a family member who is deployed with the military, they call that exigency leave. And then the fifth category is to address immediate safety needs that are related to domestic violence, stalking, or sexual assault or abuse. It's also known as safe leave. So those are the reasons for leave under this act. Now, I mentioned that you have a federal law, which is to the right of the white line, and then you have the state law, family, which is to the left of that. And so I want to just kind of go through some of the key differences so that you're very informed, you know, in order to give us guidance on this. But if we start at the top in terms of eligibility, the family leave at the state level is way more inclusive. You only have to be employed with the city for a hundred and eighty days and earn two thousand five hundred dollars. That's a fairly low threshold, so a lot of employees would have access to that. Whereas under the federal law, FMLA, you have to have been employed with the city for twelve months and have worked at least twelve hundred and fifty hours in the previous twelve months leading up to the need to take the leave. So very different thresholds in terms of eligibility. Now, under reasons for leave, they are very similar between the two, but there are a couple of expansions at the state level that I think it's important that everybody understand. So the first is defining a family member. So under FMLA, it's very specific. You can only take protected leave for a parent, child, or spouse under FMLA at the federal law. Under family, it extends that to grandparents, grandchildren, siblings, and then a very, very broad definition, which I'm going to read to you, which says, "Any individual with whom the covered employee has a significant personal bond or they consider to be like family regardless of biological, adopted, or legal relationship." So very much broader than under the federal law. Did you want to say? Okay. And then the only other change that I would say under reasons for leave is, under FMLA, domestic abuse-type leave has to be due to an injury or an illness under the federal level. Under the state program, it could be anything from seeking, you know, a protection order, securing your home if you're being stalked. There could be a much broader variety of reasons to take the leave. But I think it's also important that council knows that we do offer safe-type leave under one of our general regulations. General Reg nineteen with the city provides paid leave for employees that have to use their own leave but for purposes that are more consistent with what family has under that domestic abuse piece. So we do, we do offer that. I think the most important difference here, obviously, is the paid or unpaid. So under federal FMLA, that leave is unpaid. Generally, we require employees to use their own accrued leave to cover that time away. Certainly, if they run out, they can go into an unpaid leave status and they have job protection, but we require them to use their leave. Under the family program, they will receive a portion of their weekly wage, and it's all based on the current average weekly wage for the state of Colorado, which is a moving target right now. It's changed dramatically in the last year. But right now, the current average weekly wage is one thousand, one hundred and thirteen dollars and sixty-seven cents for the state of Colorado. And the way that this, what I would call wage continuation works under this program is if they have a need to take leave, they apply for it, they will receive a percentage of their pay. It's based on their average weekly wage compared to the state. So for the portion of their pay that is equal to or less than fifty percent of the state average, they get replaced at ninety percent. So it's never full pay. Anything above the average weekly wage in the state of Colorado is supplemented at fifty percent. The maximum weekly that anybody could ever earn under this program is eleven hundred dollars a week. So it's not full pay, but it certainly is additional pay for employees. The other key difference with the paid status here is that the city, under this program, cannot require employees to use their own paid leave first through the city. They have to be able to have access to this leave first before they use their own leave, or they can supplement to keep themselves whole. It's not designed to be a make-money situation. In other words, they couldn't take sick leave with the city getting full pay and then also ask for this on top of it. The way it would more likely work is someone would ask for a supplement under family, and then they would just use a portion. Portion of their own paid leave to keep them whole. That's kind of the idea with the program. Uh, let's see. So moving on. Uh, one of my favorite high school civics teachers always said that there's no such thing as a free lunch. That would be very much true for this plan. It is going to be expensive. It's anticipated with an annual price tag of one point two billion dollars for the state of Colorado annually. Um, and so the way that this is going to be funded is through premium payments. They are going to start January one of twenty twenty three, where employers and employees have to split the cost. Of point nine percent of total payroll. So they'll split it point four five percent and point four five percent. Split evenly fifty fifty. That is for the first two years of the program. For subsequent years. There is some uncertainty because it's not set at point nine percent. It's going to be whatever amount is required to fund the program at a hundred and thirty five percent of the fund required to cover the previous year's claims. Um, there is a statutory cap on that of one point two percent of wages or payroll. So there is an upper limit that they could assign to this, but it is, it is going to be. Um, expensive potentially past twenty twenty three and twenty twenty four. So what does that mean for the city specifically? Um, our finance department has pulled this, obviously, the last full year of wages that we had was twenty twenty one, so keep that in mind. Um, and for that year, we had about fifty two point four million dollars in uh, Medicare taxable earnings for our, our employees. So if you apply the point four five percent for employees and employer, you're looking there at a price tag of about four hundred and seventy two thousand shared for a year. Split evenly between employees and the employer. Keep in mind that this doesn't obviously take into consideration that there were wage changes in twenty twenty two. My assumption is, is that twenty twenty three, when they start collecting this premium, it would be based on a full twenty twenty two year. So keep that in mind. So uh, the finance department, department pulled this together, which I think is an interesting chart. They just said, okay, so for an average person making whatever wage at level it is there, what are we talking about per year? So you can see that, that um, anywhere from thirty five thousand, I think they went up to a hundred and fifty thousand there. It's blocked by our people on Zoom, but you can see what the annual cost is. So what the employee would be paying in for this and what the employer would be paying in for this. So that brings us to our second purpose for being here tonight, which is we're at a decision point and we need city council's guidance on where to go from here. Um, we will go over our staff recommendation. We have discussed that with the mayor and he's asked that we come to you. And we'll explain why your, your participation in this is, is important. So under the legislation, local governments were authorized to opt out or decline participation in this program. Um, subject to a very strict regulation and and timeline that we have to follow through the Colorado Division of Family and Medical Leave Insurance, which was created. Um, out of this legislation. It is limited though to cities, town, cities and counties, whether they're home rules, statutory, school districts, special districts of authority. Any political subdivision of the state has the opportunity to opt out. So if municipalities choose to opt out to not participate in the program. They will not then pay the employer premium part of this. So the point four five. We would not pay that two hundred and thirty six thousand. Interestingly, individual employees still have the right, even if the employer opts out to pay in for themselves, their point four five percent. Towards the premium. What we're scratching our heads on, and I don't know who mathematically figured this out, but apparently it does not matter if the city opts out. Because the employee will not have a reduced benefit under the program, even if the city doesn't pay their point four five percent in, which is interesting. But they don't have to cover the full, full point nine percent. They just have to pay their point four five and they still get the same level of benefit. So as was mentioned at the, at the outset of our uh, presentation tonight, we do have to have a decision to opt out. Again, not necessarily July one, but it makes sense for us to do that now. And it requires a, a formal vote. We have to have the elected body. Have a, a, a process by which they can take public comment. Obviously, the natural vehicle to do that would be an ordinance in front of council. Where in that second reading, people could have public comments. So that's why we're bringing that to you this evening. So one of the questions that we all had when we first started this is, well, what is everybody else doing? Um, and so Employers Council, which is a membership organization the city belongs to, did a survey in April. So this is about a month old at this point. But what they asked is anybody who had the ability to opt out, school districts, all of the different categories I mentioned, what are they planning on doing? I just took the two that I thought we'd be most interested in this evening, cities and towns of counties. And so you can see kind of where we are on this. A lot of uh, still undecided and gathering information is happening right now at both a city and county level. But if you look down towards the bottom of the city and town column there, you can see that the combined. Opting out or leaning towards opting out is about seventy one percent of respondents um, are planning on opting out as local governments. Only uh, two percent said that they were leaning towards opting in. And the county is a little bit different on numbers there, but I think the overwhelming trend here is that there is, there is a feeling that, that opting out might be the right answer. And so that brings us to the next slide is what are we recommending? So we, we talked a lot about this. I mean, I'm an HR person. I love good benefits for our employees. I think that's really important. However, I still feel strongly and shared this with the mayor that we should, we should opt out. And um, there are a couple of reasons for that. First of all, the city has a very generous paid leave program already. So we feel like we have some good coverage with that. The other piece of this that I think is so important is employee choice. If we don't opt out, we're automatically in. Everybody's in right now. You have to take positive action to opt out of the program. If we don't opt out and we participate, we're essentially telling our employees, you're mandated to pay point four four five percent of your paycheck into this bucket. Whether or not you'll ever even use it or make a claim. You know, I, I can, uh, I can see the lines forming at our HR office. Um, with people who are planning to retire, let's say in twenty twenty four, they're going to have to pay point four five percent into the bucket. Knowing they're leaving and they never will have used the benefit. Now, some people may think that it is still a good thing and that they want to have this additional paid leave. They still have that option. Even if we opt out, they can individually pay in and they can have that option uh, to participate in the program. So for us, it came down to an analysis of what is fair and reasonable and giving employees the choice whether or not they want to do this. Um, and so that is, that is, was our recommendation. Finally, our third reason here is that if something changes in the future, the city can always opt back in. In fact, if council directs us that they'd like to see an opt out ordinance brought before council next month. That is only good for eight years. Under this program, they have a natural mechanism built in that every eight years, even if you opt out. You have to go through this exercise again and make sure that that's truly the organization's desire to stay out. So it doesn't mean that between now and eight years that we couldn't elect to opt in. But it is something that um, is built in so that there's a review of this on a, on a, you know, on a basis, a rotating basis. And you know, our thought was, well, perhaps in, in, in a few years more time, we'll know more about this program and what it really looks like and how it's going to work. Because right now there's a lot of unknowns. So those were, that was our recommendation to the mayor. We met with the mayor, he agreed. Um, and so we're bringing that to you tonight to get some guidance from you. And that, that brings us to, to basically my final slide here, which is our next steps. So our step one is where we are tonight. We need to get some, some direction from city council on whether or not they'd like to see. An opt out ordinance come forward. If that is the direction that we get from council. You can see we kind of moved through May, June, and July here, and it becomes very regimented once you decide to opt out. So our step two at the end of this month, if that's the direction we get tonight. Is Bob will start preparing an ordinance to bring to you in June. Also in May, we have to distribute program information to all the employees. What is this program we're talking about so that they're very clear? We also have to notice them of a public hearing. That's the ordinance. So we need to tell them, hey, council's going to hear this. Second reading in June, if you have public comment, that is your time to come forward and make that, that public comment. Um, the next step then uh, would be you taking formal action on that ordinance in June. Taking that public comment before second reading. And then step four would be within thirty days of that opt out ordinance passing. We have some work to do in terms of additional education to the workforce. Specifically, we have to highlight the differences between family and FMLA, as I kind of did for you tonight. So that we're very transparent with employees. They understand what both programs do. And then also give them information on whether they want to enroll individually or not. This is how you do it. So we need to share all that information so they have that option as well. And so I think that concludes um, my presentation. And if you have any questions, Bob and I are happy to answer them. And again, we would appreciate some direction from city council tonight on where you'd like us to go with respect to this new, this new program.
Thank you, Ms. Pacheco, for that information. What questions are there from council? Counselor Flores?
I, I want to be clear about this because I, I think the decision is going to be easy. Uh, what you're saying is that there's no. Downside to the city opting out. In fact, it provides. An option for the employee to either come in or out of this program. And uh, the benefit of the employees that pick to opt in and pay this additional point oh four five. Uh, would be able to receive benefits with no negative. Uh, discounting of that because the city opted out. Am I, did I say it right? Did it make sense?
That, that's essentially what, what our discussion was in our analysis. We, we're. We don't see the downside. Um, and, and our, again, our, one of our primary. Um, thoughts about this whole program is, is that we don't want to take that choice out of our employees' hands. We don't want to say to them, you will pay this in if we don't have to, if they have that option, that, that was really important to us.
Yeah, the city, if the city stays in the program, then we force every employee.
Then there is no choice. Unless we take this opt out. We are in it. January one, we will be submitting our point four five and we will be taking it out of employee checks.
So, yeah, just quickly, uh, you don't have to go into depth, but. You made a comment, a- as I read this last night, you made a comment that. Uh, the. Medical leave program that we have is so generous in the city of Pueblo. That that could suffice for a lot of employees to take care of. A, a leave of twelve weeks if they needed it for their family. Does that include the expanding family definition or is the city? Uh, narrow, uh, like the federal uh, FMLA program?
That, well, I think that we have paid leave programs that are quite generous. It doesn't, they don't have to use leave that falls under FMLA. They could have a cold that lasts for many days and they could still, but they could use their paid leave for that. Uh, you know, I did a quick analysis before I came because I was thinking, okay, is our paid leave very generous? And yes, it is. I mean, I pulled general service, police, and fire. And they have a significant vacation accrual. The, the thing that family is going to help the most on is brand new employees who don't have their accruals built up. Or are temporary employees who don't have an opportunity to earn paid leave other than. They get a certain number of hours per thirty hours worked under the Healthy Family Workplaces Act, which we brought to you. Um, earlier this year. So, so those are really the people that would benefit from enrolling in this. So uh, short answer is yes, we have very generous leave programs that allow people to accrue. A substantial amount of paid leave. As they exist under our, our collective bargaining agreements and policies. So um, you know, that was another decision point for us in the analysis for sure.
Right. So I, I think the decision for me is simple. Uh, you know, I. I would say that the city opts out. I, I don't think uh. That we should be forcing our employees into this, but they should have the option. And I'm, I'm all for that if they want, they want to opt in. There's no downside for the employee.
Right.
And uh, there's really no downside for the uh, majority of our employees. Uh, that opt out also because of the generosity of our, our leave program.
Right.
I think that's, those are all the points, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Warner?
I was just going to say, yeah, bring that uh, ordinance to us.
Okay. Counselor Martinez Ortega?
Thank you. Uh, have you asked the uh, different unions what they, what they want?
We, we haven't polled them yet. Um, I think that. Uh, you know, we're going to do an education campaign and that we'll, we'll get some feedback through that. Um, you know, I've been the HR director here for twelve years and I can't presume to know everybody's mindset exactly how they would feel about this. But I can tell you just anecdotally, based on past experience, I think we are going to have some pushback if we said you are going to give almost a half percent of your pay. Towards this program with very little, you know. But we'll certainly gather that feedback, not only through the education program, but I think then again, council will have the opportunity to hear from those people if they have a concern about it.
Oh, I'm sure that we will. And um, you know, when, when we're talking about that point four five percent. Um, we're talking about like twenty seven dollars a month for somebody who makes seventy five thousand a year. That's not very significant uh, for somebody who's making that kind of money. Um, but if we opt out and we're putting that other four point four five percent on them, they're paying sixty bucks for. Extra insurance, um.
And, and they wouldn't have to pick up the city's point four five. They only have to pay their own.
That's right.
So. Yeah, I mean, I could definitely see that argument if we're saying, okay, now you're going to, you, if you want to do this, you're going to have to bear the full point nine. And that is not what we're seeing in, as part of the program.
Cool, uh, or thanks, but um, but I guess um, my default would be to ask. The three different labor organizations, um, because Paige is also. Um, maybe not, doesn't have as generous of packages as the other two uh, bigger unions.
But we, we can certainly do that. And in fact, you know, as part of any ordinance that we bring to city council, you have that stakeholder process section within our background. Um, document. So that would be a logical place to put that. So we're certainly willing to talk to the leadership of all three units and have that discussion. Sure.
Counselor Atencio?
Yeah, um, if we opt out from family, they still have the federal program. FMLA.
They, they do.
To count on.
And they could also do family if they, if they individually contributed. They could have both still.
Yeah.
Up, us opting out doesn't limit that for them.
Marissa, I don't understand the math. Because if we, if we opt out and then point four five is only paid on them. Then they still, a- and they opt in to the family program. Then they still can get the benefits of the eleven hundred dollars during the month, even though the city is not opting in. Like, I don't, I don't get that.
Neither do we, but that is how it is written. And so, yeah, we've, we've all been scratching our heads. How does that work? Um, but everything that we're reading and Bob, you, you tell me if you see it differently, but it. They, it doesn't change their benefit. I don't know how that's going to work, but. That's how it's written.
Bob, can you clarify the li- the, that?
On that issue, no. Uh, I think they're still uh. Uh, working through what this program's going to look like. Payments won't actually be payable until twenty twenty four, although if we don't opt out. We'll be making deductions in twenty twenty three. So uh, news to come on that. So it's a, it's an interesting program. I think they're still working through it. They still have to finance it. And there's actually a case now in front of the Carlos Green Court. Uh, wherein they're contesting it as a violation of Tabor and they expedited that. They had oral on May third, so. Unfortunately, it's a work in progress. For example, we just found out. Think uh, the state just published April twenty seventh. Uh, this clarification that our vote doesn't have to be. Uh, by the end of July, it can be anytime prior to the end of the year. And there was some confusion on that given the way the regs are written. So I can't give you any clarification, but I certainly can before uh, the next, when the ordinance comes.
As of right now, that's how. As of right now, that's how it's written. So hopefully they don't change the program midstream. That would be.
Well, that's what I was just thinking. If they change it midstream and we've already put an ordinance in place that says. Thinking we're doing that because we're going to be covered either way and then our employees aren't. So. I do really advise that we do it now if they don't have all of the rules and regulations in place.
I, do you have any comments on that?
No, we, we could certainly wait.
We can.
But. The, the benefit of the insurance just can be a cost to the city and the employees. So our position was, recommendation was that the, the. The benefit i- i- is not there for the city to not opt out. But we have time, so we certainly can review that one.
Counselor, I think that the, the element of choice though is still it, you know, in question. Because if we're in, we're in and they won't have a choice. So.
Counselor Flores?
Here's my prediction. Uh. If some act.
Here's my prediction. If some actuary put these percentages in place and all councils and all counties in the state of Colorado use the same logic that we're doing, and every, everyone opts out and gives the employees a choice, that point oh four, five is not going to make sense because they're counting on point, you know, oh nine to cover the, the probability of losses under this insurance. And so, something's got to give down the road. But our decision is just to opt out at this stage. And, you know, whether we do it in July or we do it in December, doesn't matter to me, but I think we need to do that. There is one other question. Our, our contracts with our unions doesn't, it doesn't tie our hands to, to do this in any way, does it?
So, no, we've taken the position that if the whole concept, the only people allowed to opt out are local governments. And we believe the reason for that is to, to not get in conflict with prohibitions against forced mandates. And so, if we don't have the right to do this, is, is, as a government, we have to negotiate whether we can or can't. We really don't have a right at all. So, we've taken the position that that's a legislative decision outside of bargaining.
Counselor Martinez Ortega?
Thank you. Whether, I think whether we were pulling together an ordinance to opt out, I think that we should maybe wait an additional month to get some of that information from, from some of those, from the labor. Because just to give a, enough time to get all the information, make sure everybody's on board.
Oh, that was my diagram. That could be changed at a moment's notice, sir. If you say wait, we can, we can do that. Yeah, I, I don't think it's, it's unreasonable to think that we couldn't get some feedback from the, the unions before we would bring an ordinance where that's, we can do that in pretty short order.
Okay, great. I just want to make sure that we.
Absolutely.
Check all those.
Understand.
Check with all.
And I think Marissa's diagram had it coming via ordinance in June. Is that correct? Her first reading, then second reading late June? I guess when we're talking about a timeline, is there a way, or like, does the legislator have a timeline on when they're going to figure out to fund it? You know, the other, like?
Well, so, sorry. So, they're, they're funding it starting January 1 of 2023. So, that's when they're going to start collecting premiums from all the employers, private, public, everybody, January 1. No benefits will be paid off, out for a whole year until January of 2024. So, they're building the bank in advance before they pay out the benefit. So, all we know is that by the end, before the end of 2022, we have to have a decision on this, whether we're in or out. That's, that's the timeline I don't know.
So, just to give you an idea of how murky this area is becoming, the current law for the Supreme Court is the state needs to get loans in order to create this, a, a system that'll be able to process these contributions and allocate them as, as necessary. So, what the state was trying to do is get a loan from the banks, and the banks won't give them a loan until such time as the Supreme Court says this law is constitutional. That's why they had an expedited hearing in front of the Supreme Court on May 3rd regarding the case that's pending before. Everybody's indicating that the Supreme Court likely find it constitutional. We don't know. So, there's really not even, they don't even have that in place yet. So, just, it's just a side notice to.
We're making a decision before litigation.
And what if, what if then, if you're, if then, if an employee opts in, and then they are paying into this program all of 2023, what if they leave January or February of 2024? What happens to all that money?
We don't know. So, what we're trying to do is figure out what's best interest to the city. And that's a good question because the, the obligation, at least the city, to start contributing unless we opt out starts January 1st, 2023, although the benefits don't get, start paying until January 1st, 2024.
I don't see anything in the regulations as they've published them that would give any indication that somehow you would ever get a refund. Essentially, you're paying into a state pool of money that then will be used for all different employees all over the state. In other words, I don't think they're segregating. This is just for city of Pueblo. I think it's just, how I'm reading it is it's a big pot of money and everybody gets paid out of it. So, I don't think there would be a refund. That's, that's kind of the example I gave. Somebody's planning to retire February of 2024. They're going to pay into it all of 2023, knowing they're leaving in 2024, and they'll never use the benefit. They'll never even make a claim. So, it's, it's a little murky. And, you know, when we first put this on work session, we were on a firm July 1 date. That's what everything was saying. So, the fact that they've changed that now and saying, oh, you have a little bit more time to consider it, you know, that, that could change the timeline if council wants to push that out. But knowing that we do have that looming end-of-the-year deadline, we must make a decision before the end of the year. So.
Other questions or comments from council? Seeing none. Oh, sorry, Counselor Maestri?
Are we in, if you're asking us to make a decision before litigation is even done on this, are we, is, is there something that we could be liable for? I mean, because we don't have the full information. As a council, we don't have the full information. And you're asking us to make an ordinance or requesting that we make an ordinance based off of not being fully informed?
So, no, we wouldn't have any liability if we opted out.
No, I'm not saying opted out. If we make a decision before their decision and all the information is put in front of us.
And we could do that, too. I have no idea when the Supreme Court will rule. There's no, there's no law that requires them to rule. It's anticipated it'd be shortly because I think that there's some deadlines the state wants to get resolved. So, if the Supreme Court finds it's constitutional, we're in the same situation. If the Supreme Court finds it unconstitutional and we've opted out, it, it doesn't matter because the law no longer exists. We've opted out of a, a law that doesn't have any.
But at this point, it's lawful. I mean, it hasn't been, it hasn't been stricken down by the Supreme Court.
Did that make sense? Sorry.
Mm-hmm, it did.
Okay. Seeing no other questions or comments. Thank you, Bob and Marissa.
Can I just clarify that the decision is you want us to bring an ordinance next month, or you want us to wait? Just, I had mixed comments.
Counselor Martinez Ortega?
If you think that, well, I guess what I, what I'm kind of thinking of is mitigating a lot of the public comments and getting ahead of that beforehand. So, if you think you can do it, you think you can check in with all the unions by the third week of June for the second reading? And I think that's fine, right? So, I guess that would be to not wait.
Bring in ordinance.
Bring in ordinance, but definitely check with everybody beforehand.
Sure.
Counselor Graham, Counselor Atencio, Counselor Maestri, Counselor Flores, Counselor Wanner?
Thank you. That was crystal clear. I appreciate it. Thanks, Marissa.
Thank you. Okay, then the last agenda item that we have is revolving around the conflict of interest legislative procedure. So, Mr. Kogosik, take it away.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The mayor thinks that you should adopt a protocol and procedure when conflicts of interest arise. He prepared an ordinance for your review. I, I did make one change, and council had said we want to limit this to immediate family. So, I, I tried to define that in Section D. But that definition, and in fact, this whole protocol is up to council. You can change it. You can adopt it. You cannot adopt it. It's, it's really up to you. It's your legislative rule. So, you can proceed as, as you desire. And President Graham asked that Bob Jagger be available. He is. And so, he and I are available for your questions. And that's staff's report.
Mr. Kogosik, do we have the copy of the updated ordinance at all?
We can make copies. Yeah, I'm sorry.
What questions or comments, I guess, are there from council? Counselor Grant?
So, I mean, my biggest comments, questions, and concerns are if the law department isn't following the guidelines that we already have in place, why are we putting more guidelines on the council? There's been just so many conflicting issues that we've had. Most recently, we all received the complaint against Counselor Winner last Friday night. That pretty much states that somebody would like her to lose her seat because she was in the room after her ethics complaint was made. And I asked Mr. Jagger to be here because Mr. Jagger and I had spoke briefly before the meeting, and he had given me direction that it was okay for Counselor Winner to remain in the audience because it was a public meeting. But Mr. Kogosik said that that was not okay. And so, in the best interest of the seven of us sitting up here, I think it's important that we have consistent information from the law department and consistent information for every single counselor in the same way. So, I am not for putting more rules on the council. I believe that the seven of us know when it's an appropriate time for us to recuse ourselves from voting. I would like to see, you know, something that's not an ordinance or resolution come forward for us so we do know rules and regulations. And for next counselors that come into our seats, you know, especially with the, when you have to register with the Secretary of State, when you have a conflict of interest. I know Counselor Martinez was told, you know, how she had to do that, when she had to do that. And apparently, it's 72 hours before. Nobody from the mayor's office or the clerk's office told me. I found out about 4 o'clock the Friday before, which was not 72 hours. And something had to be registered with the Secretary of State, and my name was signed on paperwork, not by me, by somebody from the mayor's office. So, I think it's important that it's consistent for all seven counselors. And I am, I'm not for any more rules, you know, and regulations being put on the council. I think we all know when it's appropriate to recuse ourselves. And I think it's important that the attorney's office be consistent with all seven counselors on when they should need to recuse themselves and in what matter.
The registration with the Secretary of State's office is completely voluntary. You're not obligated to do it. A lot of elected officials do that to create a record that they have disclosed the conflict of interest.
Mr. K, so is there a reason why Counselor Martinez was directed that she needed to do that and I wasn't?
I, I don't know who directed whom. I did, my, the law department did not direct anybody. It's voluntary. It's for the protection of the elected official.
I just want to clear up the record really quickly about my specific ethics complaint, just because I feel like we've talked about it so much. You know, I, I work for the Health Department. PDPHG premium pay was on the work session schedule, which we all get every single week, and we see it in advance notice. As soon as I saw it, I actually worked with both my HR at the Health Department as well as the mayor's office and the city clerk's office. And I was given the written communication that I could stay during the work session for the ARPA premium pay. And looking back, I didn't ask any questions during it. I didn't give any type of notification either way. And after, after the work session, I think about a month later, I followed back up again with the mayor's office and the city clerk's office. And again, I have it with written communication that I had to then, it would be in my best interest to not only recuse myself during the vote and to leave the room, but also to file paperwork with the Secretary of State's office, which I did. The clerk's office handled it really well. In the actual vote, I was recused by President Graham and left the room before the vote. So, I was taking the advice that I was given. I think that as a new counselor, it's, it's, I do think it's important to have some sort of things in writing as a new counselor, just so that way there, there's no, there's no, there's no excuse for not having, not knowing unspoken rules. Mr. Kogosik?
Thank you. Thank you for that explanation. When we had the work session and it, it, where the premium pay was discussed, I was present at that work session. I did not know you were an employee of the Health Department. It was never brought to my attention. I just want to clarify that for the record because people have said that I did not act appropriately at that work session. Well, I did not know where you worked. I don't know where any of you work. I know that President Graham has some famous and excellent restaurants. I, so I, I don't know. So, I, in terms of speaking, I think it's appropriate that we have a formal procedure for disclosing any conflict, both before a council meeting and a work session, if there's going to be a discussion. So, then the record is clear. But when we had the work session on premium pay that, that you might receive, I was unaware that you were a member, were employed by the Health Department.
At that time, I was just following feedback from the mayor's office and the clerk's office. So, I, I do think in moving forward, and I'm sorry, as chair, I should be, you know, allocating to, but now that I'm talking, I think it is important to have something in writing that we can all follow and it be standardized across all seven of us. I do think it, I do think it's important for us to be working under the same principle, the, the same procedure and everything. So, I would like to have something codified around this. And I also think in the future, with new council members, to have all of the unspoken rules, whatever they may be, codified as well. And perhaps a formal orientation packet or something like that where, in addition to the city charter, so that way we're all, again, operating under the same procedures and it's not new members not knowing what not to do.
So, we have?
I'm sorry. We have those in place already. Why wouldn't we just utilize those? We have them in place. They are written in place under the charter as we, as we are. These are additional.
Mr. Kogosik, do we have a process in place right now that's written as it relates to conflicts of interest?
Yeah, the, the conflict of interest. section is in the municipal code. It's section 197. And it's also in state statute at CRS 24-18-109. And then we have Amendment 23, which is, which established the Colorado Independent Ethics Commission. And they all prohibit participating when an elected official has a conflict of interest. The Independent Ethics Commission issued an advisory opinion that says that not only can you not vote when you have a conflict, that's what the municipal code says, and that's what the state statute says. But the Independent Ethics Commission says you cannot even debate questions that come up. So, yeah, it exists, but there, we have a lot of things in your legislative rules that already exist under state law or under the municipal code of the charter. So it's, it's the recommendation of the law department that, that you adopt this legislative rule. But that's up to you.
Counselor Atencio?
Yeah, I'm in favor of adopting this rule also, the only problem I have is with number four, that the counselor shall be allowed to remain in the council chamber, but shall not be allowed to address counsel. And then on number three, ordinances on second reading, such members shall not cast a vote, shall be excused from the council chamber, from the council chamber, so they're going to be allowed to stay during the debate. And, but then as soon as the debate is over, the presiding officer is going to have to shoo them out. So I believe that they should be.
You know, it's, it's, as the mayor said, I think, when this came up, it's up to you. You can decide to vote when other people think you have a conflict of interest. Understand that there are legal risks in doing that. You can decide to stay during the discussion, or you can leave the room. Where the mayor is saying, when it's discussion only, when there is no vote, when it's a work session, you're allowed to stay in the room and assume.
Then I think adding work session to this IV should be in order then. Because during a second reading, the council member isn't going to be in the room for the discussion, correct? And, and I say this because ever since I've been here, whether it was tradition or whether it was codified, the presiding officer waited until the counselor in question left the room, physically left the room, and that's the way it's been. By tradition maybe, but all of a sudden, it's changing. I don't see any reason for change. And, and I think because section 316 says that they shall exit the council chamber, that's why traditionally, everybody had left the room as soon as they declared a conflict of interest, whether there was discussion or not.
Sorry, I, I agree, I think section IV, section four can be clarified. And you raise a very good point. So it's, when no vote is taken, the mayor wanted to give you all the option to stay in the room. And then, you know, that's your rule, that's fine, you can say, all right, if it's just discussion, we'll leave the, the dais and, and take a seat. Or you can say, no, you really should leave the room, or during discussion, you don't have to leave the dais. That's your rule.
Counselor Flores, and then Counselor Winner.
I need an explanation, I guess, between the, is it a statute, a state statute that deals with conflict of interest? Because I, I recollect, and it's been, it's been a while, that when I was on the school board, anytime we had a conflict of interest, we prepared a letter that went to the Secretary of State, and that was really to memorialize what you had done, and so that there's no question that you, that you did that. In fact, I think it's required under the statute. But since we don't have the ability to supersede state law and state statute, why aren't we just aligned with the state and not be messing with this at all, we follow the statute?
That, that's a good question. And the Secretary of State has this electronic procedure to disclose 72 hours before the vote, not, not the discussion, but that is 100% voluntary. You have an option to do that or not. I, I think it's always safe to do that. But it's 72 hours before the vote, and it's optional, it's not required.
Counselor Winner?
Yeah, I think the definition of conflict of interest that the state has, it's just maybe three sentences, I think that's, I think that's enough. It covers everything. I would even go as far as saying, if you're best friends with somebody, you need to recuse. And then also, I think I remember Counselor Ortega had, in a meeting, said, wait, so-and-so is my first cousin, is that a conflict of interest? And Mr. Kogosik said, no. And you voted on that as well. So I think it's, it's, I don't know, it's kind of all over the place.
Well, that's why it has to be codified, and here it is.
It says right here, yeah, well, no, the, the conflict of interest, this is the state's, a conflict of interest exists if a legislator has reason to believe or expect that he is, that he, his spouse, a dependent child, or a business with which he is associated will derive a direct monetary gain or suffer a direct monetary loss, as the case may be, by reason of his official activity. I think that kind of covers it right there, you don't need to go into all this, like.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off. The rule you just read is for members of the General Assembly. It has no application to the Pueblo City Council.
I realize that, but I mean, this is plain and simple, it's not a bunch of ordinances. And just like I mentioned, when Counselor Ortega said, this is my first cousin.
Yes, under, under, I have never seen a definition of immediate family that includes a cousin.
Well, when we had that discussion at the last work session, you said definitely first cousins would be, would be on there.
I don't recall saying that.
You did.
I said nieces and nephews, I didn't say cousins.
Well, everybody here is saying that you said that. Okay, you're not.
Where, where's the rest, I mean, because the last time you gave it to us, you had the existing statutes stapled to the new stuff. Do you have those?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
I would be delighted to add first cousins to the, to the rule, if you'd like me to do that. But I've never seen a definition of immediate family that includes cousins.
In the case of, of this particular situation, though, you've got to also analyze the circumstances, if there's no gain, which obviously there was not in Mr. Ortega Martinez. So you got to take the circumstances into consideration also.
Well, there was a, a gain for the relative. So you're voting on a gain for an immediate family member.
Yeah, who was under contract, like, before I even had gotten elected and stuff like that, so it was still.
He gains.
Yes, exactly.
Yeah, we're waiting for.
Counselor Mastry asked for the full context, the conflict of interest within the whole thing.
Trying to look it up, and I already knew it was part of this.
Counselor Graham?
Mr. Kogosik, can you clarify for this complaint, though, for Counselor Winner that we're going to see coming up? When I was directly told by Mr. Jagger that it was fine for her to be here, and now somebody's filed a complaint when your office said that it was fine, what we're supposed to do moving forward with this, this complaint right here? Because I, I would assume that we're going to see several, at least four of these for every single time that something happened when there was conflicting information that comes up now.
You want me to explain Mr. Jagger's reasoning to you?
I, I mean, not the reasoning, but I'm just, again, it's, it's contradictory to, to what you're saying now, to what this is saying, that we're passing into this, this complaint that we have, so.
I respectfully disagree with your opinion in terms of what I'm saying. What I was referring to was the unwritten rule that Laria Tencio mentioned, that if you have a conflict, you leave the room, period, during discussion, during voting.
So, Mr. Kogosik, when you're not in that seat and Mr. Jagger is in that seat, who shall we listen to? That's, that's what I'm asking.
And that's the reason for the rule, Madam President. What the rule does is it says, that's how you decide. The rule says that when it's discussion only, at, at a work session, you can stay in the room but leave the dais, and I think you make a good argument for adoption of the rule, so there be clarity.
So if this rule does not pass and this complaint comes across, what shall we do then?
Which, you mean against?
Against Counselor Winner.
Yeah, that, that's going to be an item on the next work session. I'm sorry, the next meeting, not, not the next, so at the May 23 meeting, you will decide how to proceed with the ethics complaint against Counselor Winner. It's the recommendation of the mayor and the law department that you hire independent counsel, as you did with the complaint against the mayor.
But the recommendation at the time of the complaint was that she was allowed to be in the audience. That's, that's my confusion, that's my problem here.
Yes, I, that's, that's correct, and I see Mr. Jagger's reasoning. The reasoning is, it's still a public meeting, she is still a citizen, she has the right to attend a public meeting. But you raise a very good point, and you make a good argument for passage of this rule because it clarifies that if it's discussion only during a work session, the counselor can leave the dais and remain in the room.
And if there was a vote being taken place, you're now saying that that is not okay, that she should have left the room?
Yes, that, that's, I think even Mr. Jagger would, would, would say that when there's a formal vote, she should leave the room.
Can we ask Mr. Jagger?
You can ask Mr. Jagger anything you want.
So for clarification, when we had met prior to the meeting, my opinion was, to be present for purposes of that provision of the charter, you have to be able to vote. Section 316 states when present must vote. When you are prohibited from voting by law, which she was, she recuses herself, which she did, and she leaves the dais and merely observes the vote from the audience. My opinion at that time was that you would not be present as that term has meaning in the charter. And that's the opinion I gave you and advice I gave you, a little bit summary form, because we didn't have a lot of time.
But now your advice would change?
I, I, I do not advise counsel at that time. I was, Mr. Kogosik had a conflict, so I was taking that item on. If I would have been able to auto-review it with Dan and follow whatever advice he had given, but that's the advice I gave.
Thank you.
Under the unwritten rule, which Counselor Atencio mentioned, Ms. Winner should have left the room. That's the unwritten rule, the mayor is saying, let's not have an unwritten rule, let's have a written rule.
Really fast, sorry, Counselor Mastry, Counselor Winner's been wanting to talk for a little, a while.
Yeah, just to clarify, what Bob had said is that if you have recused yourself, you are therefore not able to vote. And that's what the city charter says. The only reason that I have a complaint is because the mayor gave his definition of that on work session, who somebody else watched on television, so now I have this. Definitely, if we pass an ordinance that says somebody has to leave a room, then, then it's, then it's law, we have to pass an ordinance. But I just wanted to make that clear. Because I, I think the, that's the mayor's, I mean, that's, he's the only one that has that definition in his head over it, probably because he just wants to get rid of me, really.
This unwritten rule is really just not a rule. I mean, please tell me in that ordinance, in that ordinance where it says you have to leave the room. Where, in, in that, in the charter, it, it says.
No, it's not in the charter.
Well.
Counselor Winner mentioned the charter, the charter does not address this issue.
No, the charter says right here, is failure to vote by counsel.
316, okay, sorry.
Failure to vote, which you recused yourself, so you're not voting. But it does not say in here that you have to leave the room.
No, it doesn't.
Okay, so then you're not in violation of anything.
You, you can, you can stay at the dais, you can vote where other people say you have a conflict of interest. That's fine, no one's going to stop you.
We're just saying she's didn't.
You can do whatever, whatever you like.
We're recusing ourselves from the dais, if we choose to stay in the room, we're not in violation of this, of the, of the charter.
No, but like I said before, I mean, I, I came on in 2007. And every president, from the day that I got on, whenever someone was recused themselves, they waited until, and the counselors followed that tradition and left the room, every single time, up until this town, this this membership, has it ever been different? All of a sudden, we have an issue, so if we have an issue, here's a solution. Let's pass it, that way everybody knows, when you're. Let's pass it. That way, everybody knows when you're, when you're in, if it's a work session and we want them to stay in the room, fine. If they vote, they got to leave the room, fine. Here it is. Let's pass it. Make sure everybody knows about it. And it's not up to the city attorney or anybody else to babysit us and tell us what and when and if we should be doing something. It's up to us. If you don't read the Charter and you don't read the regulations and you don't read all of these things, it's on you. If you don't know when to leave the room and you don't know when to recuse yourself, it's on you. It's not up to Mr. Kogosik to babysit us as to whether.
Well, that's what we have legal counsel for. I disagree. He represents counsel.
He represents us. He doesn't babysit us.
I just want to have this come back to what we need from staff. So staff is requesting the document that we have before us around codifying a procedure for a conflict of interest.
That's the request of the mayor, the Law Department and city staff. And there appear to be three votes negative. The question is, are there four votes?
We're not voting. It's not a vote.
No, I understand we're not voting.
We're not voting, so it's not a vote. Let's be consistent with our language.
Counselor Maestri, let me finish. There appear to be three members of council based on their comments, who are opposed to passing this ordinance. I understand we're not voting.
Okay, in terms of codifying this, moving forward on a regular agenda, Counselor Martinez Ortega. Counselor Graham. Counselor Atencio.
Yes, with changing number four to work session.
To add in the I would like to move this forward to a vote. Counselor Maestri? Counselor Flores? Counselor Winner?
Thank you for the direction, Madam Chair. We will this on the May twenty third agenda for first reading.
Okay, seeing no other bit, Counselor Martinez Ortega.
Oh, yes, I would like to direct the Mayor's Office to see if we can put together a resolution to see how much it would cost to put some flowers on Northern and pull that out of city council contingencies. I'm assuming it'll be about two to three thousand dollars to do to kind of help spruce up between I twenty five and, I believe, Orman. So and we can talk about that a little more going forward. I just want to let everybody know.
So noted. Counselor Winner.
I would just say it needs to be a line item. I mean, this comes up every year. It should be in the budget.
Seeing no other business, it is seven forty three and I conclude this work session.